Going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is May 4th, 2015. Let's start with the invocation by Father Jeff Belger, St. Mary's Catholic Church.
Teddy Roosevelt was a man who had a reputation for being frank and direct. In 1900, a year before he entered the White House, he wrote these words. "No community is healthy where it is ever necessary to distinguish one politician from his fellow because he is honest. Moreover, it is not enough that a public official should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if he is not also brave and wise. The weakling and the coward cannot be saved by honesty alone. Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the people of Oskaloosa. But along without honor comes duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So let us settle our hearts for just a moment in prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen."
Amen.
Thank you, Father. Charlie, I see you in the audience. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Callagerry.
Here.
Jimenez.
Moore.
Here.
Ben Zettin.
Yes.
First Day.
Yes.
Walling.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Before we get started with the regular city council meeting, I'd like to make a presentation of employee longevity. There's a plaque here for Tim Nance. Tim Nance retired on April 30th, 2015 after working 34 years for the City of Oskaloosa Fire Department. Tim began working in the fire department on August 4th, 1980 as a full-time firefighter and became a captain on December 3rd, 2008. Some of his best memories of working for the fire department are from his early years. When he started, they still used the fire pole to slide down to get to the apparatus floor. Firefighters still rode on the back of the trucks. Tim said depending on who was driving, you might or might not get on the truck in time to leave, and you made sure that you hung on when you drove to the fire. Some positive changes that Tim has seen over the years are the changes that make the job of the firefighter safer, including the PaaS devices and the air packs for all firefighters. And during his retirement, he's planning to continue to work full-time for S&amp;S Painting. He's looking forward to having nights, weekends, and holidays off, planning to go camping and enjoy his grandchildren, and says he will be up to see the new fire station as it's constructed. These are good things. You know, we look from time to time at the people who are our long-term employees, and I have referenced from time to time over the years, the institutional memory that they carry with them. Not only is it the why we do what we do, but it's also the influence and the coaching of the new hires that take place from the people who have the gray hair and who have been in the tough situations and worked their way through it. They bring to the fire department the professionalism and the knowledge that it takes in order to continue on and to grow the department. He's helped set the culture of the fire department over these many years, and he's set the foundation for the future, and so we thank him for his years of public service. And Tim, we can't really thank you enough, but we do have a wall plaque that's worthy of hanging in your house. So is Tim. Could you come forward? This plaque is fairly brief, where it says it's an employee recognition. This plaque is awarded to Timothy Nance for 35 years of service to the City of Oskaloosa as an employee of the fire department. So, Tim, thank you again. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, back on to the rest of the general agenda here. Next item is the opportunity for community comments. It's an item that's reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. Community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. Ask to keep statements brief. Time is limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff or the council members or the mayor, we ask that that's done prior to speaking to the full council, so that gives us an opportunity to fully research and perhaps even answer the questions away from the meeting. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Next item is the consent agenda. These are items that are basically routine in nature. A lot of times, it's where no discussion is anticipated, receiving reports, that sort of thing. I would draw attention, however, that there is an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission of Charlie Comfort, an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission of Gabriel Wagner, and the third reading of an ordinance to vacate and sell the 134 and a quarter by 16 and a half of the north-south alley adjacent to 815 Fourth Avenue West, and that includes the approval of the resolution approving the deed and authorizing the sale. And then also, Item L, which is the resolution amending the fee schedule for the Edmondson Pool, where the city is encouraging families to come early and purchase season passes. This offers a 10% discount if a season pass is purchased before Memorial Day weekend. The season passes are purchased from the city clerk's office starting in May, and the admission prices also change for children and evening swimming, with children under two allowed in free with an adult, and evening admission after five would be $2 instead of the afternoon rate of $4. It is silent as to whether or not a children under two would be charged something for walking in on their own without an adult. Anyway, do we have a motion supporting the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ben Zettin.
Yes.
First Day.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Callagerry.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to item number seven, is the building code. The announcement of vacancies. Applicants must reside in Oskaloosa and be 18 years of age unless specific specifications are stated. First is the Building Code Board of Appeals. We have one vacancy to fill. It's upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. This is a five-member board that meets as needed. Three males and one female currently serving. We have one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, we have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for unexpired term that ends on December 31st, 2016. It's a seven-member board that meets as needed. The Library Board, there are three vacancies for six-year terms that begin July 1, 2015 and end on June 30th, 2021. It's a nine-member board that typically meets the fourth Monday of the month with four males and five females currently serving. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have one vacancy to fill. It's on appointment for an unexpired term ending on April 30th, 2019. It's a seven-member board typically meeting as needed on the second Monday of the month with three males and two females currently serving, two vacancies. Okay? Item number eight is the regular agenda. And so, going first to Item A, this is Consider a Resolution Adopting Proposals for the Employee Life and Health Insurance Programs for Fiscal Year 2016. In the agenda item, I'll read the first few paragraphs out. Brad Ryman of Barrents Management Group is going to be here to review the proposal for the employee life insurance, health insurance, and flex spending plan benefits for the fiscal year 2016. Historically, the City of Oskaloosa has utilized a self-insured program for life and health insurance benefits with a stop-loss program. As a self-insured entity, the city assumes the risk associated with providing the insurance benefits, but also sees savings by not necessarily paying the overhead associated with insurance companies that manage the fully insured programs. Premiums associated with the city's self-insured program are collected through city property tax, road use tax, sewer charges, as well as monthly contributions made by employees who are electing family coverage. Brad, I'll give the podium to you.
If you refer to the handout, I believe you have, table content is pretty self-explanatory. We'll just, we'll go through the vision, the dental, the life in AD&amp;D, the voluntary life, the flexible spending account, the medical renewal, and then we will not cover the renewal history, but you can look at the history for your reference. The next page here, voluntary vision for those employees who wish to participate in voluntary vision. There are 17 participants on that plan, of which the rate increase was for those people was 7.1%. This is only the second increase we've had since the plan went into effect. The last one was back in July of 2011 for 4.9%. So we've had a pretty consistent, nice little plan for the employees, and when you have 17 participants, it kind of tells a story. Usually, you'll have, that is a high participation. Voluntary dental, that's with Delta Dental. There are also 15 participants on that, and there has not been an increase on that since it was implemented in July of 2011, and so there's no increase on that. The group life, AD&amp;D, is with National Insurance Services. There's no rate change on that, for the reason is, it's in a two-year rate guarantee, but we haven't had a rate adjustment on that since we implemented that, I believe, almost six or seven years ago. Same thing with the voluntary life insurance, which the employees participate in. There's no rate change on that as well. We haven't had a rate increase in that, and we're also in the two-year rate guarantee as well on that. The flexible spending account that each one of the employees participate in, the expense that's to the city, it went up 3.2%, and I put in quotations there, it's $60 per year. So that's, it's kind of a small amount from when you look at the whole picture of all the benefits, so. Any questions on those programs before we move on to the medical? Anybody? Okay, we'll move on to the next page. The biggest, there's two increases in the, significant increases in the program, and one is the medical claim fee. As you, currently on the left side is your current program, and on the right is the renewal. It's gone from $21.47 per employee per month to $30.64 per month. That amount equates to $6,500 a year. Now, a lot of people go, well, what's going on with that? Well, for those of you, most of you were on the city council when we were with First Administrators. First Administrators was a subsidiary of Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield, of which Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield pulled the reins in and said, "We're no longer going to have this entity anymore. We're going to move everything into house into Walmart." What's really happened here is, it has nothing to do with healthcare reform, has nothing to do with ACA or anything like that. It's just an administrative cost that Walmart is experiencing across the board, and it's kind of a catch-up, I guess would be the best way to put it. And I look at it this way, $6,500, and it's not in your packet, but I want you to note this, that you had a 64.4% network savings that was offered to Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield's network, which equates to $282,225. So, you know, you got to look at this and go, okay, $6,500, but what did I get for that extra $6,500? That's what you're getting. You're getting their network, you're getting the discount. Now, provided you could go to another carrier and probably get a discount, but you will probably not get a 36%, you may get a 25% discount. So somewhere between there and what the number they got. So I kind of look at this, $6,500 really isn't much when you really look at the full picture of it, but it is a 32, or 36.4% increase. And I think when Mike and Amy and I went over it, I mean, they kind of felt, in a way, that it kind of felt that that was justified. Moving on, any questions on the administrative costs? There is also an increase on the prescription, the PBM fee, which went from $1.91 to $1.93. The reason that's gone up is if you look at your notes on the bottom, the rate is really 68 cents per member per month. What happens is that went up because your account went up. That's the only reason it went up, because of the census change. That's the only reason that went up. That has nothing to do with, so that rate stayed the same. It was 68 cents per member per month, and that remained the same. It just looks like an increase, but the only reason for it is because if you look at the census, it has a little bit of adjustment they had from last year, when I was here last year when I proposed the proposal. Next question or area is the reinsurance premium. Your reinsurance premium right now is with Sun Life, and Sun Life's rate increase was a lot more significant than 26.89%. We're moving everything over to Walmart Blue Cross Blue Shield. One thing I will comment, that one thing about moving to Walmart is it's an immediate reimbursement. Before, what we had is we had Sun Life, we had a claim, and if it went over the $40,000 specific, we had to wait a month before we got reimbursed. And that was because there was no, First Administrator's arrangement, it was between Walmart, so we had to work with them on that, and so it took another month. Now, with Walmart, you'll get immediate reimbursement, so it's a little bit better for a cash flow standpoint, okay? Now, that is $60,000 increase. That's an ouch. The only thing I can say on that is a lot of that's validated because of claims. This year, and I've told this many times, that you're going to have, on a 10-year period or five, you have a 10-year period, you're going to have two good years, really good years, you're going to have two really bad years, and you're going to hopefully in between come out ahead, and some of the comments you made, Mayor, earlier is that, you know, that's what happens with the, with the, why you go self-funded versus fully insured. But that's predominantly the reason for the increase on that. That's, you know, how do I put it? It is what it is. I mean, there's nothing a lot we can do. And we did get a quote from Sun Life, and we did go to other carriers, and this was the best one we could come, this was it. And I think because of Walmart being able to get reimbursed as claim occurs, it's a lot better from cash flow standpoint. The last thing is the aggregate factors, which only went up 5.96%, which is your maximum claim factors. If you should have a lot of claims that are under the $40,000 specific, and those numbers exceed last year's 691,000, well, this year, they're saying if it goes over $732,000, you'll get reimbursed. So I, we're, I think, what'd we say? We at 80% right now? Is that what I said? Something like that? Yeah. So we're still within the bar. So overall, if you were looking from a fully insured standpoint, if you had a way of, you know, you hear just a flat rate, somebody walks in and says, "Here's your renewal rate." If you're looking from that, you really are looking at maybe 11% overall increase. If you're looking, hearing what's going on in that marketplace today, it's not a pleasant sight right now going on with renewals, so. Other than the fixed cost of the reinsurance, I don't feel that anything was, I think, everything is justified based on the claims, and we're not sharing claims information with other people or anything like that, but this was, this was one of those bad years. Last year was a really good year, and this year's not a really good year, so. Any questions on any of that information I just discussed? And the last page, as I indicated, I really don't, this is for your reference, just kind of gives you a little bit of history. I know most of everybody I look in the crowd I've seen here since I've been coming, it almost seems like. Congratulations to all of you. I don't know if that's good or bad. So anyway, so you show a history here of what's gone on in the last six, seven years to get an idea, and then we annualize what's going to happen for this year on the right side. So we took last year's numbers, and then we annualize them and so forth, so. We put that in there just for your reference, if you got an idea, you know, kind of from whence you come, or came, I should say. And if you look at premium equivalent is really what you need to look at, because that kind of tells you, if you look at the good and the bad years, it kind of tells you, this year, it's going to be about 602, if it nets out 1485 a family, but last year was 418. So you see the, see the up and downs going on there, so that premium equivalent column is kind of really tells you what your history is doing, so. That's all I had. Any got any other questions?
I guess not. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you. Thank you.
So anyway, thinking what we're hearing is that this is the best we can do. Do we have a motion? Yeah, to adopt this life and health insurance programs for 2016?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
From a budget standpoint, if you budgeted these type of costs, or are we going to, is this going to require amendment, or what were we planning there?
We're fine. We still have available fund balance of over $775,000 for a year, as of April 2018. So we're comfortable with where we're at, and yeah, it's been a bad year, but that's why you have that fund balance. And this would be, what, the third or fourth year? Third year in a row that we haven't charged the department a higher rate. 2013. So again, we've always expected to use fund balance, because we want to actually see that number be lower than $775,000. But we've actually had good years, and so it's actually accumulated each year. So this will be a year that we just absorb and we'll be fine, so no need to amend the budget.
Thank you.
It's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
First Day.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Callagerry.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ben Zettin.
Yes. Okay, that passes. Moving on to Item B, considering a resolution letting special assessment against private property for sale of the property located in 201 High Avenue East, Oskaloosa. It's by the City of Oskaloosa in accordance with Code Section 8.08.080 of the City Code. So this is the time for a public hearing on letting a special assessment against the property owned by Deloitte Dave Phillips, who owns the trust, located in 201 High Avenue East, Oskaloosa, for city cleanup of the property. A certified notice of the hearing was sent from the property owner. Notice of hearing was published in the Oskaloosa Herald prior to the public hearing date. Since I'll open the public hearing at this time to receive any comments that people have. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium.
I'm disputing this, because at the time that all the garbage and everything was picked up, I was down seeing my son in Texas, and I had no reason to think that it was any of my tenants that live in the building just south of there. At that time, there were three occupants, and then there was, in the main part of the building, they said they take what little garbage they have home with them, and how it all ended up there at my dumpster, I don't know. I have an idea, but I don't want to say.
Do you have trash pickup?
Yes.
Why didn't they pick up?
Why did they pick it up?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a Midwest, I'm looking at a dumpster here with a company on it. Why didn't they pick up?
Well, for the tenants that lived there in the building, and they're supposed to put their garbage there, and like I say, the one party didn't, or doesn't, on the main floor of the four apartments in that building, three of them were rented at the time, and up until this time, everything had gone fine. They picked it up, and there was no problem. At this particular time, like I say, when I was down in Texas, somebody decided that's a good place to dump all their garbage and trash and everything else.
Is this a weekly pickup?
What?
Is this a weekly pickup?
Yes, I believe so.
So this is being picked up every week, and it looks like?
It wasn't a weekly pickup. It was picked up every two weeks.
Every two weeks. It could be. I don't know. I just paid a bill. But why I got all that garbage when I was gone there, I don't know.
So what do we do? Do we come in and pick this up and clean it up?
Yes, we try to contact the property owner to let them know that there's a problem, and if they don't respond within a certain amount of time, we abate it because of the health and safety issue associated with the garbage.
So did we go pick this up, Michael?
We had Midwest sanitation dunker.
If I remember correctly, this was an ongoing problem for about a month.
We had a couple of instances that required our follow-up.
So this happened in January?
It was in the middle of January.
What was the date on the?
I went down to Texas to see my older son, Kevin, and was there for six weeks, and during that time, all this happens, and...
You don't have a property manager?
But he's not aware of the garbage, I don't think.
Does anybody check the property while, does anybody check this property while you're going?
No. Because up until this time, we haven't had any problems. I've been here in the city since 1963, and this is the one instance of, that's happened, and it just happened while I was down away from the city.
Doc, have you had any garbage put on top of it since you've put the chain and the padlock on it?
There were some beside it at one time, and I have gone by there occasionally, and usually it's pretty clean now, but I guess according to the picture and everything, it was a mess. And like I say, I'm sure that my three tenants that were there at the time wouldn't have done it because they hadn't done it previously and haven't done it since. I personally think that, well, I better not say.
Did I understand you correctly? You said your tenants don't use this dumpster?
The what?
Did I understand it correctly, when you said that your tenants do not use the dumpster for their trash?
The main tenants said that they don't use it, no. They're in shipping and handling of different things. They're on the main floor, and they said, no, what little they have, they just take home with them.
And Lloyd, do you have this locked up now, so?
Yes.
No one can use it unless they have a key to get in and out?
Yes, there is a lock and chain on and out.
So it shouldn't happen to you again?
Right. And like I say, it's been quite clean ever since then. And I think whoever did it got the message. But it happened, like I say, in the middle of winter, and I think it's just that people didn't want to walk 150 feet as opposed to 30 feet.
Why are we seeing this now for something that happened in January?
Because of the assessment process takes this long. It's a lot like weed mowing. It takes months for it to get to because of the public hearing requirements, posting in the paper.
Is this going to get another three days for a person to pay for it first before it comes to this process?
Any more questions or comments for Dr. Phillips?
A question maybe for, we have a minimum in this specific instance. Do we know what the actual costs were, or is that something?
I do not recall. Again, I think it was, I don't know if it was a $90 dump or a $68 dump or something like that. It's in between that range. But again, because of its emergency abatement, we have a minimum $250 plus insurance rate And that was a change that this council made to try to basically make the public understand it's an important deal, that nuisances need to be dealt with, and that was supposed to be one way of helping change things.
Have we have any record of a problem with this property or with Mr. Phillips anywhere else in any other properties?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, in this particular instance, there was probably a month or two that it, we had to deal with, we had to follow up with Mr. Phillips to get trash dumped on a regular basis because the two-week period wasn't cutting. But I think that's been rectified. I haven't had any issues or reports of problems there since.
It still gets pretty full if you let it...
It still gets pretty full if you let it go for two weeks. This time, it was locked up, chained up. The, what do you call the door, whatever was about that far above, and there was several bags on top of that when they picked it up Thursday.
Oh, just this Thursday?
Just this Thursday, yes. If it was picked up weekly, he wouldn't have a problem. It's picked up every two weeks is where the problem is.
And $90 was the internal cost?
So we had our, we would have our cost as far as whatever internal cost we would have as well?
Yeah, certified mailing and then notified.
Publishing.
Publishing.
That'd be an addition to the $90, $90 in staff time.
But $90 was the Midwest sanitation bill.
Doc, it sounds like you might want to go to weekly pickup.
Well, you shouldn't even have to have the two-week pickup because the tenants themselves don't have that much garbage, really. And why this one time they, it was all dumped there, I don't know. Like I say, when you're down several states away from here, you don't keep track of those things.
Well, somebody's still getting it inside that dumpster with the chains on there because it was full. It was more than full, but before it was picked up by waiting two weeks.
This week, you're saying?
Yes, yes. And it was last, two weeks ago, that Thursday, it was full, clear full with stuff on top too.
So somebody's putting?
Somebody's putting trash out there.
Well, they're getting inside the chains. So somebody's got a key to get in there. And I guess all the tenants have a key, and I think Jason has a key, right?
Yes.
Who's Carter. Jason Carter's got a key. But what's your feeling on this, Aaron? Pardon?
Well, at this point, why don't we continue the hearing?
Right.
And then when we close the hearing, we can have the conversation back between council members. So are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Phillips? Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion for the resolution levying the special assessment against the private property?
So moved.
Second.
Now, discussion?
It's been an ongoing problem. I've been watching it since January. And it's still a problem. Chains have helped. I'll go with that. But in two weeks' time, I'll guarantee you it's full, it's overfull, and it's on the top.
Yeah, I can't imagine letting go. I mean, two weeks, that to me is a long time, especially here in Iowa. I mean, it's pest harborage, that's rodents, that's alleys. That's why you have a property manager, you know? You got to follow up with those guys. It's just, this is pretty bad. So I can't see waving under these circumstances here.
What do you do when you find all that garbage there?
That's something you need to work with property, I mean, you have to work that out. That's part of the business plan that you guys have to work out.
Like I say, I've been here since 1963, and this is the first time I've ever had this problem.
Mark it up as a learning experience. As a learning experience.
Is Jason Carter the property manager?
I assume he is. He's the one that's got the keys to the chain, him along with the tenants, I understand.
Is that true, Dr. Phillips? Is Jason Carter your property manager? So during the time you were gone, he's responsible for the property?
In Iowa, yes.
I mean, from a cost standpoint, we're going to be pretty close from a city to being out of cost, what we're charging here. And the $90 at minimum would have been a cost Mr. Phillips would have to incur. He'd have taken care of it if he was here. Do I understand that correctly? I mean, if he'd have called somebody to take care of it?
If he had called somebody.
Any further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
See, some public hearing again. Considering a resolution authorizing staff to submit an application for a United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Communities Facilities Grant. It's for the purchase of a pumper tanker combination fire apparatus. The chief of the fire department has completed and submitted the documentation to the USDA Ag Rural Development Community Facilities Program for a $25,000 non-matching grant to aid in offsetting the cost of the purchase price for a pumper tanker combination fire apparatus for the fire department. The grant, if awarded, would help offset general obligation bonds that would be sold for the purchase of the new pumper tanker for the fire department. So as part of the grant application process, a public hearing is required, and so now's the time for that. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would care to comment on this grant application? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting it?
Moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to item D. This is, the item title says, "Consider a motion directing the city manager to compel the Nazarene Church to install public sidewalks at 140 Gateway Drive, Oskaloosa, Iowa, as stipulated in the council-approved site plan that was dated May 18 of 2009." This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of council members Van Zetten and Versteg. Council member Van Zetten has also requested the following language be included with this item. Quote, "In accordance with the $6.2 million transportation plan and blue zones, to review past history, discuss, and take possible action on sidewalk requirements at the Nazarene Church's location." Before we open up the conversation on this, I want to mention that the language on this is fairly tight. And so per open meetings law, we are to be talking about just the Nazarene Church sidewalk proposal. So we don't want to drift off into talking about other projects, that sort of thing. And I also know that the language in the item title, there were some questions to whether using the word compel was appropriate or whether the word require would be appropriate. At this point, I think they have interchangeable use, that either way, it's instructing the city manager to take action regarding sidewalk to be constructed out at the Nazarene Church. Compel and require are the same thing?
For present purposes, I believe that would be correct.
So. So the, I guess we need a motion directing the city manager to compel the Nazarene Church to install public sidewalks. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Ready to go.
The only reason I've got my name on here is I'm not for the Church of the Nazarene putting sidewalks in.
Okay.
I just wanted Van Zetten to get it on the council. It takes two to get it on there. He wants to discuss it. I'll let him discuss it.
Well, I think we got a couple of different standards going. One, we're using the blue zones complete street where we just require several houses in my ward to lay sidewalks on both sides of the street. Then we go after Brian Bowie because there's something on his site plan and we require him to put it in there. We need to start doing this fair, and we need to figure out what the best solution is. And I did talk with Robert today from the Nazarene Church, and I don't want to require anybody to put sidewalks in. But I think in this particular case, something needs to be done. I don't know what the right answer here is. But where I would go with this is, to me, there's some blight issues out there. Where do they run the sidewalk? How does this all come together? I know this is just about the Nazarene Church, but it might, unless you're going to take the stance that you want sidewalks on both sides of that street, I think there might be a more common sense solution where maybe Walmart or the Herald or that group is an entity. So I guess myself, I would be felt, you know, to kill this, but put another motion on the table that we look at that area about getting sidewalks out there. I don't know how to do it because of the blight, because they have the drainage ditch. It's set back far on the Nazarene Church side. There's got to be a way that we can do this without hammering people. So I guess I'd kind of like to look at the site as a whole plan and see if we can't figure out a way, a safe way to get out there and back without people going on the side of the gravel that we see all the time anyway.
We looked at this, well, it was on the Walmart side, I suppose, maybe eight years ago, six years ago, something like that. And it seemed like there was a DOT stipulation that was a problem, wasn't there, Michael? Do you remember?
Before I got here, but I believe that is correct.
There's something about the DOT running that along Highway 92, a sidewalk.
That we could not run it?
At that time, I don't know if that's changed, but at that time, there was some kind of a stipulation by the DOT of running a sidewalk along the highway.
And maybe that's the case. I don't know. I just wanted to get it out here and say, right now, we're not levying sidewalks.
The engineer at that time
Equally with everybody.
Had made some kind of a design to come up from the trail and go up over the bank, over across the old Pella Highway, between, I think, between the Herald office with the trail, and have a sidewalk go up that way to Walmart.
It was between the Herald and Sears.
Yeah, between Herald and Sears.
Because I was on P&amp;Z when we approved the Walmart plan. We started talking about how we can get a sidewalk up. Because I believe the sidewalk on 92 ends right in front of, just before the dealership there, in front of the Baptist Church. There's a sidewalk, I think it ends right there.
Yes.
And we was looking at how to get from that point up to the Walmart area.
On plan, I'm telling you.
I have some questions about the title. Comment, it says, "As stipulated in the council-approved site plan dated May 18, 2009." The two documents, and I believe it's page 17 and 18 from a previous packet. It's hard for me to read these, but are there sidewalks showing on those two plans? Because I didn't think they were, but eventually I just couldn't see them.
You're correct, Councilman Yates, there are not sidewalks shown on that site plan.
So then when I read the minutes from the past meetings, I know it was referenced in both, I think, P&amp;Z and the council minutes from 2009, that they, something was said that responsible for any future sidewalks needed on the site.
Right.
Okay? I'm not sure how to interpret the language that says, "As stipulated in the council-approved site plans." I just don't see them stipulated, and maybe I'm wrong. I just want to understand it better.
Approval of the Nazarene Church site plan was conditioned on a number of items. A few items. I shouldn't say a number, a few items, which would have been widening the entrance to three lanes and installing a light to illuminate the entrance and Gateway Drive to add detention on the east side if the timbers removed. And the church is responsible for any future sidewalks needed on the site. So those are all individual stipulations. In order for the site plan to be approved, those have to be complied with at some point. And that's the legal document. So legally, they're required when, and that's what the conversation is. When are the sidewalks, quote-unquote, needed? There wasn't any specific language that said upon construction of other outlots. It doesn't say anything. So from my perspective, and that's why during the last council meeting, I was asked if I needed a specific item to force the church to put those in. I said absolutely, because I didn't feel comfortable that there was clear guidance on that. And it becomes a political decision.
But for my clarification, there's no drawing. When I think of a site plan, I think of a drawing. I understand there's language here, but I think of a drawing. There's no drawing out there that, to Councilmember Van Zetten's comments about, we need to have a plan. I agree with that part. But there's nothing, at least preliminarily, that exists right now that says where they could have went or anything like that.
That's correct. In my discussions with the church, those weren't, that conversation never happened. So, yeah, we would have liked to have seen where they would have been drawn in or surveyed. But essentially, you're starting from scratch, and we'd work with the church and say, okay, obviously, based on development standards, where should they be located and what works for them? I think that would be the next step. But we don't have any specific locations based on the site plan.
And I do recall, when I was on the P&amp;Z, we talked about that. And about the sidewalk, at the time, like it says here, where future public sidewalks are needed. But we was also concerned down here by the trail, where the sidewalk, down by the trail area with that bridge, or it's real rugged down in there. We didn't know where it would go also at the time. And plus, there was no plans. So you really didn't know where it would go or connect to.
But for the discussion, I still think we're saying, or tell me if we aren't, if we, the city would get a sidewalk out that far, they'd have to put their sidewalk in.
If you decide to go on that side of the road, yeah.
And they agreed to it, I would not lie, when you came.
Any further comments or discussion regarding compelling the Nazarene Church to put in the sidewalk? Like I said, I want to go back to this where I, I don't feel, there's too much on the table, I think, that still needs to be discussed, especially with the Nazarene Church. I don't, I don't think it's fair to them to hammer this through until we have a chance to really find out what the best option for us is. And I think we all agree that we need to get something out there. I think the Nazarene Church, even, you know, when I was talking with them, they agreed that, yeah, let's get something together. Let's work on something and put something together that makes sense. I don't want to hit them with, you know, $100,000 of sidewalks. I know everybody's running lean, and there needs to be a plan. I don't know what that timetable is until we figure out what the plan is. So, you know, like I said, I'd like to kill this, put another motion on the table that says, okay, we're going to require the sidewalks to go in upon, you know, whatever the plan is. And let the plan work with them, find out what the timetable is, look at the costs. What's the best solution here for everybody to get this taken care of?
But from that, and I certainly support the plan or develop that plan, but we already have that requirement. If we came up with that plan that says, whatever, we have that, those minutes of 2009 would say that's already been adopted. Would that not be correct, Michael? I'm not saying we don't make a part of it. I'm just saying, we need the plan, but then we wouldn't even need further action. They would have to put it in. Is that correct?
They can put it in whenever they would like to.
Right, but I mean, for us to require that, it'd be, if we did that, what Jason suggested.
They would have to amend their site plan, which, just trying to think through this. You could obviously work with them and come up with a location. They would need to amend their site plan. But, yeah, you've already, the city's already given approval or required them to put it in. It's just a matter of when.
Right.
And again, this only, I mean, this only came up after last meetings conversation. So we, as staff, we're not requiring them to put it in. So that's why I chose the word compel, because we weren't, nobody was, they weren't going to do it on their own at this point, from what I understand. And we, as the staff, we're not requiring it. So.
We've already established that compel and require are the same thing.
Sure. But again, what I would say is, I would take, it would require additional action by US Council to politically say when the sidewalks are needed.
I think I heard Jason say, this isn't the time.
I think, well, I'd like to see them put in before winter. Now, I don't know what that means, you know? If that happens to be, you know, $200,000 of sidewalks, and it's not feasibly financially possible for them to do it right now, then we need to look at figuring out, okay, what is the appropriate timetable? What can we do to make it maybe a longer plan for them that becomes more bearable? And I don't want to be having them spend money on something that clearly doesn't make sense. I mean, just to run a sidewalk there
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense unless it's going to fit in. And we talked about the DOT. I mean, I don't know where it's going to go on their, on their.
Here's the problem I'm having. I know Mayor David said, don't talk about any other projects, but we're not treating everybody the same. You know, we, yeah, I know, but I've got to say it. We made Brian Bowie put sidewalks into nowhere. Yes, the city finally come in and connected to them. We did that. We made him put them in. We made the water department put sidewalks on South 7th to nowhere. And yet, the church didn't have to, and the college didn't have to, on Lacy Drive. And that's what I'm after. Why don't we treat everybody the same? Why don't we just, why don't we just say, don't put any sidewalks in unless they're already there on the street? The water department could have put theirs in when we went up South 7th Street. They didn't have to do it now. We're not treating everybody equal. That's what I'm after. I could go on and on and on, but
Yep.
I know. You can give me dirty looks all you want to, Mayor, but that's the way it is. You can give me dirty looks all you want to, Mayor, but that's the way it is.
I got better dirty looks than that.
I know.
So what is it that we, I want to, obviously, well, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'd like to give them some concrete, you know, come up with a plan first to find out, you know, where are we going to run it, and not waste any money there.
To me, that plan would have to go all the way up to Casey's, all the way up to El.
To where the sidewalk stops.
Yes.
There's a sidewalk down so far.
And unless we get Casey's and the rental units...
I think I remembered this right, we don't have, in the lights at the intersection across from the church and Walmart, we don't have walk buttons or signs yet.
No.
And that's going to be a big dollar item. I don't know who pays for it, but I'm afraid to ask.
Well, I think...
I'm sure it won't be the church.
Well, I brought up in the past, we were talking about, you know, this west corridor, trying to do something with our west corridor, and I think in that plan is where possibly we can bring out where sidewalks need to be going, on, you know, on the west corridor plan, incorporate all that at once, because I think you're still going to have some problems down here, down by the trail, down by that used car dealership down on the bottom of the hill there, I mean, I don't know how you're going to get a sidewalk across there, yet. I think that's where those things will be happening, because we may not need a sidewalk on the church side. I don't think you want people walking down that side and crossing the big intersection to go into Walmart. I don't think that's safe. I think it's more logic to run the sidewalk on the north side of 92, and somehow come across the old Pella Road there, down through the trail, and then up into the Walmart area. I think we just need to sit down and look at this.
So what do you need from us to get something together to move forward?
Well, we need to study it, so we're talking an engineering study, is that what you're looking at. If you want to propose building the sidewalks, obviously, we need to talk to the DOT about right-of-way widths, and I'm sure that's part of the issue, but whatever's put in there would have to be engineered. And so we'd have to get a contract with an engineering firm to do that, to survey it, and to figure out where the sidewalks need to go on whatever portion. Again, typically, that's what the private property owners do, but there's a section there that kind of crosses over with the ditch and the rect rail that would be public messes up.
I hate to spend money on that study.
So that's, if that's now the priority, then I guess that's what I need to know. Again, it's not necessarily included in the plan, the transportation, the active transportation plan, we didn't show connections there. But again, that's the beauty of a plan, it can be amended, and so if that becomes the priority of council, then we can talk about that.
The $6.2 million transportation plan that was referenced earlier, if I remember right from the last two weeks, that referenced some key locations in the city, did it not? And included in that was Walmart, was it not?
There was a section that included, it's a red dashed line on the north side, and it was labeled as a safe routes to school proposal, and that was an incorrect distinction. That was something that we had originally planned to submit with the safe routes to school document, but obviously, because it didn't go to the school, we pulled that out, but unfortunately, it got put into the, to the transportation plan. So that portion is incorrect, so it actually should show as nothing crossing Highway 432 because of the past issues that we had with it.
I thought, and I don't remember exactly what it said, but I thought there was 15 or 20 key points that people need to get to, and Walmart was included in one of those points. Whether there was sidewalks on, I don't remember the map, but...
Right. And again, yeah, obviously, there are pedestrians that use that area, so it could be extended. The plan includes priority one, two, and three designations, so it's either, filling gaps is what we identified as priority one.
And the reason I make that comment is, you know, that, that's a very early document, and we don't know when that money will be spent, or if it ever will be spent fully, but we had to come up with something. If that plan references at some point getting to Walmart, or that's a key point in our community, I don't know that it's completely out of bounds to at least consider what it would take to accomplish getting out there, which would then address both these issues. It'd be part of that plan as well as it would figure out where we needed sidewalks out in that area. So I'm not sure, again, from my view of it two weeks ago, that's going to be a very fluid document, and it just so happens we're dealing with fluidity two weeks later, but that's okay. And so to look at it, or to study it, and, you know, there's different levels of engineering studies, you could do a high-level feasibility study, at least to know where the route would go before we get into full in-depth surveys and stuff. I'd certainly not be opposed to that, because I think getting sidewalks out that direction, we've talked about it before, as being a good idea for the city. I could, I could support that, I don't know that I want to...
You're talking about great...
I could spend a little bit of money to find out just how much it's going to cost.
That's where I'd be at. I think, kill this, put a motion out there directing the city manager to research what it would cost to do that, and then bring that up.
Yeah, maybe come back, that's great, come back, tell us what it would cost for that study, to even find out.
And let us know what it's going to be, and take a look at it, and see if it's something we want to follow through.
We're talking to Walmart side now, right, the north side.
I don't know where it's going to go.
I don't know where it should go.
Let these guys, you know, tell us where it's going to go.
Yeah.
And then come back to them and say, hey, guess what, it is going to come through here, here's your portion to build, you know, this is what it's going to be.
It might turn out the DOT won't want this.
Okay, so why don't we, to keep things clean, why don't we do this then? Let's go ahead and have the vote on the resolution that we have a motion and a second on for installation of the public sidewalks. Have that vote, and then reopen it as to what exactly we do want to do with this.
Okay, so we want a vote against?
Yes, vote against it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Call Jary?
No.
Moore?
No.
Van Zetten?
No.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
No.
Okay, it fails. So the next thing we were talking about then was, in that same vein, is to direct the city manager to investigate what?
And make a motion for the city manager to investigate the cost of getting sidewalks out to that area, Walmart and the Nazarene. Take a, I, I'll leave it right there.
Okay.
You want to say "and" or "and/or"?
"And/or" would be fine.
Okay. So, when, when he's looking at the cost of doing so, does that mean you're supporting an engineering study that would come up with cost estimates?
If that's what we have to do, is that what you're saying we have to do, Mike?
We'll try to do as much as we can internally without spending money. I mean, that's, we have design staff on board, but we have to do another thing, so, yeah, we can, we'll have this done in-house first.
Okay.
That's my hope.
Do you still have that study that lives? I think that was her name, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Did?
I don't know.
You might go back and look at that.
I forgot about that one.
Okay, so there's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess, just to further my, I still think this is part of the overall transportation or walk plan, whatever we called that, I won't call it, and that's why we had good discussion on that last week, and now we just figured out how to fit it in. There was no commitment to spending any certain amount, those were estimates, and I think it's great that we have that plan, and now we can continue to tweak it with things like this, so, makes a lot of sense to me.
Further conversation? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Call Jary?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, that gets us to the end of the regular agenda, reports from city staff, city manager, anything?
Mayor, a couple items. The spring cleanup happened last, last week, and some of you noted that it appeared that there was less for us to pick up than in previous years, and the statistics that our staff collected seems to support that. We spent less money overall to complete this particular cleanup, we spent approximately $10,000. Previous year was $15,000, and that includes staff time, fuel. We had about, let's see, 104 tons of garbage and trash, 11 tons of tires, and 49 appliances. Compare that to the previous year, we had 140 tons of garbage, 170 truckloads of garbage, 35 tons of tires, and 54 appliances, so a little less utilization, I don't know if the scrappers are more savvy, or if people just didn't put their stuff out, so I wanted to at least report that to you. Additionally, a building official and code enforcement, I went out and walked North A and North Market Street to, just do a tour of homes, I suppose is what I'd call it. And we made contact with property owners to let them know some things that they could do to improve their properties. We came up with 41 properties with violations, just on North A and on North Market. In addition, we had 20 violations for nuisance. So at this point, building officials working on 71 open cases for building problems, and I know code enforcement has over 100 issues right now that they're, they're working on for nuisance. We've had 102 violations that entered the system since August of last year. So, something that we're working on, continue to work on. Obviously, we have to, to work with our legal team, so that we don't completely overwhelm him, but that doesn't include the 14 pending municipal infractions and actions list that we have. So I just wanted to at least bring the attention that we are trying to work with property owners, and when I say violations, it's first contact. So we reach out to them and say, hey, we found this violation, we want you to correct it, we're giving you this type of timeframe, give us a call and let us know if you can comply with that. So that's what we're doing. Next meeting, I'll provide an update to the goals and project list, which is a four-page document that covers the priority areas of infrastructure development and maintenance, community planning and economic development, community partnering and civic engagement, public safety and awareness, and fiscal and human resource management. It's a document I tend to update, try to update for you quarterly, it's about that time, so, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City clerk, anything?
Nothing.
City attorney, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, gets into comments from, from the council, start on the far end. Jason? Tom?
No, sir.
Just glad you're back.
Scotty?
No, thank you.
Karen?
May I talk about sidewalks again, Mayor?
Uh, no.
I just have a question. When Brian Bowie was doing his project on Edmondson, I brought up Parkview Lane, Michael, that had no sidewalks, it was a project that was going on at the same time, and I noticed now that there's two houses out there that are putting sidewalks in. Are we changing that now?
Like we discussed at the study session, or the, I'm sorry, committee meeting, and a matrix of properties that were raised by you and the developers and the builders, excuse me, as potential inconsistencies, as I disclosed to you there, we were following up where we could, and specifically where there was active construction, and that particular development and that developer, we felt strongly enough that if they're still building, they should have to put the sidewalks in, for the approved subdivision plan.
Are, are we going to go back then and make the other people put sidewalks?
Not actively constructing.
Pardon?
There's no active construction in those other areas.
But the developers should have to put them in, is what I'm saying. If that was the code at the time he started the development.
It's all dependent upon what the council approved with the site plan. And again, this matrix covers that, that it covers William Penn, what the sidewalks are in, whether they're out, council approves that stuff. Again, we're trying to find and be consistent where we can be, and this particular subdivision is actively developing, we're saying put them in.
Thank you. Also, I don't know if they've got picked up yet, but there's about three mattresses on South 7th, 600 block, east side, that was there as of this morning yet. I don't know if they got out late, or if the city, I don't think the city missed them, I think they probably got out late.
That's what I, that's what I noticed.
Pardon?
No limit on how many mattresses, too.
These, I think there was four there, so, that's all I've got.
Okay. Joe?
Nothing.
Okay, and yeah, I want to say a special thank you to Doug Yates, I thought you did a fine job running the meeting last time around, and made me thankful that the meeting was in good hands, and that I didn't have to run it at that point. I was anticipating, I was on a bank trip, and so we were headed for Baltimore the next morning anyway, and so I wondered whether the best, what was the best place to be, but you did a fine job, so thank you very much.
Good thing there wasn't a vote on that.
Who goes to Baltimore? Okay, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1785.82]